I'd like to call the meeting of 1,000.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to call a meeting of 1,684th order. Standing your words. Approval of school committee minutes, 1,683 on April 17th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion?
I have a couple of things. On the bottom of page three, the very last sentence where it says Beth advised that she will Achar, I think she meant prepare Achar. I think there's a word missing there.
Most likely.
And then the other thing, let's see, it's on page four, near the top, talking about the program of studies. We spent a significant amount of time with Q and A and discussion and all kinds of things, and I wondered if just a sentence could be added after question and discussion into, you know, there were several of us that complimented the creation of the new program of studies. I know Bonnie said something, I said something. What a really sharp-looking document it was, and I guess there've been upgrades because I haven't looked at it in years, but it might be nice to just compliment that.
We'd like to add that.
I'd like to have something to that effect added. I don't have exact wording, but just because we really did spend significant time there.
Kim or Carl, anything?
No, not for me.
Okay. Hi Nancy. Okay, can I have a roll call vote to approve the minutes?
Was there a second? I'm sorry.
Yes, there was.
Okay.
Jim. Jim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Arthur, yes. Any received correspondence?
There isn't any.
Okay. Student representative report?
I don't think we have one tonight because we.
We had some games going on.
Yeah, so.
We were hoping somebody would get back, but not yet.
And we don't have a spotlight because we moved the meeting, so.
Okay. Public comment? Anybody would like to speak?
Hi, just in case you guys don't know who I am, I'm Donna Parsons. I've been a resident here in Sheffield my whole life, a former student here at Southern Berkshire. I've been driving for Southern Berkshire for 25 years. My concern's right now with this big problem with our transportation being, bringing in Dufour and getting rid of our local transportation company of 49 years. I know some of you have problems with Messine's, but your feelings towards them should be kept private, not personal, and taking care of, sorry, taking out on the children because you are hurting just them. It's about our community and our children's future. Like I said, I have been driving here for 25 years and interact with the children. They come to me and we will ask each other how our days went, how the vacations went. They come to me when they are sad or they have problems. Parents will come to me with any problems, so as a family and a community, we work through it together, just like our Southern Berkshire T-shirts say, "One team, one family, one community." And I don't think Dufour is going to be able to provide that. I'm going to be very disappointed and very sad, this decision, if you guys allow Dufour to come into our district. They will never be able to cover what Greg has covered for the transportation of all these years. He's gone well above and beyond serving this community and giving back into our community. There is only maybe a handful of drivers that might go with Dufour, might, and only because they still have children in this district. Greg has always made sure and/or tried his best to cover all runs, sports, field trips, late runs, the special needs runs, getting the transportation they deserve. Dufour will never be able to do this. Already, they cannot cover other schools that they drive for. For the sports, I am well aware of them not being able to bring them down here when they need to play or the games are going to be postponed to a later time. I am one of the drivers that will not drive for Dufour. It makes me very sad that I have to tell my children and family that in June it's going to be the last day with the kids. They are very upset and sad as well, so maybe you guys should take their feelings into consideration and of their families that go here, as well as the rest of the 17 bus drivers and the six-man drivers, out of jobs, and there's children that have been there for them as well for many years. So please, take all of this into consideration that Dufour will never be able to cover our district and care for our community and family. Also, I have heard from other parents outside our district that already 10 times Dufour has called or emailed the parents and told them that they do not have enough bus drivers, so the parents had to bring their children to school and pick them up to bring them home. So, at that, being lack of bus drivers, I don't think this is right. You've already got your bus drivers here, you've got the drivers that care about the children here, and that's the way it should stay, because otherwise, in August, the buses, there'll be no buses, and you guys will look like fools. That's just my opinion. So please, take it into consideration for the friends, the families, the students. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Ms. Oh.
Excuse me?
Yep. No, go ahead.
Okay. For those that don't know me, my name is Luann Harvey. I live in North Edgemont. I have a granddaughter who lives with us, and she takes the bus. She happens to have Donna, who is just a sweetheart. She is bus number two, and she's more than just a bus driver. Can you hear me?
Not really.
She's more than just a bus driver. She is a friend, a mother, a teacher, and a therapist to our children. She sincerely cares about every one of them. You can't put a price on that. There's just, there's no if, ands, or buts. She treats all the kids like they are her own kids, and if this is about cost, is it cheaper? Is it cheaper to have people that are unqualified taking our kids on these long trips? Is it a new company? Do they employ local people? Do they bring in their own people? Have you checked out their references? As Donna just said, is it, do they, are they qualified? Will they be there? Because I know for one, my son is not going to be able to pick up and drop off his daughter if he has to be at work. I can't do it, I work. So you need to look into all of this. Maybe we should look in if it's about money, and I don't know if it is, because I didn't read the agenda before, I apologize, but if it's about money, can you look to see if you could cut somewhere else? Messine, Messine Bus Company has been around since, let me see, oh my God, forever, because my children are in their early 50s, and they went to school here originally, and then they went on to other schools, but I just, I don't think you get rid of a good thing. If he has done something extremely wrong or bad, well, you know what? There's a way to handle that, but I don't think Greg has ever done that. Parents have entrusted these bus drivers, driving in blizzards and everywhere else. Donna will, she stops speeding cars trying to go by, and the reason why I know, because I sit at the end of my driveway with my granddaughter in the car, and she is just like unbelievable to have somebody else that comes in that doesn't even know the people, the kids or anything, and just, you know, take over. I think it's totally wrong. I wouldn't mind paying a little extra to keep Messine. I'm trying to think what else I would like to say. I just, I got home from work and my granddaughter says, Grandma, you have to quickly go to the school, so I had to quickly jot down some things that I thought, but I want to know how much research each and every one of you have done on this company. Donna brings up some good facts. Have you researched that? Do they have parents that cannot, you know, pick up or drop off their kids, yet they're being called and saying, "We don't have a staff"? You have a staff, you have a good company, you have history with this company. Really think twice, and if it's a matter of cutting, let's do a survey on the whole school here and see where else we can cut. Maybe there's a better place in the school system that we could cut, but think twice about cutting where our kids are entrusted with these people every day. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, who's up there? Okay. Marie, I can't see from here.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Marie Cadence from Sandersville. In an attempt for me to try and engage more choice in students from Sandersville, especially given the fact that Farmington River has settled their basic agreement with Sandersville, I just have a couple of suggestions, and please understand I am by no means an expert on the meeting laws in Massachusetts. I think parents would find it useful if the agendas, like for tonight's meeting, were posted on your website for tonight, as well as the meetings for the previous minutes. They're posted after, which I'm sure is perfectly legal. You have, I don't know how many hours to post your minutes. My other concern is, in trying to find some things under subcommittees on the district website, I went in and saw that, for example, you still list transportation warrant, which really isn't a committee anymore, because there's been nothing since 2017 or '28. Warrants, there's been nothing since 2018, 2019, so I'm just assuming you can probably get rid of those. Also, building France Technology, there's nothing listed for '24, '25 for meetings. The last team was '23, '24. I also found out that, I thought to be a little bit concerning, but again, I do not know the open meeting laws in Massachusetts. I did research though. For example, on your finance committee, or finance subcommittee, there were meetings on February 12th, March 6th, and April 15th, according to what's posted. However, the last minutes were dated, or the minutes were approved for 1/29. The same thing with community relations. The last minutes were September 10th, but yet there was a meeting on March 12th where nothing's been posted. Curriculum and HOP subcommittee, the last meeting was 9/24, but there are no minutes. The superintendent of AL, there were meetings on 12/9 and 1/6, but yet again, no meeting. I don't know how long you have to post subcommittee meetings, or actually, where do you have to post them according to the open meeting law, but I think it would be helpful if residents who choice in their students can see what actually takes place, especially at school committee meetings with the agendas. And the other thing is that I don't know, sitting on a board event in Connecticut, it's a little bit different, there's for personnel negotiations, there's no minutes, but several meeting agendas that were posted. Now, I'm going to assume, maybe incorrectly, that minutes could be posted saying, "These members were present, motion was made, seconded, approved, who went into executive session, then came out of executive session and adjourned." I'm just trying to help improve communications with total, with kids that choice in and their parents, because we don't get any letters that the school committee may put out in your newsletters. They just go to your five-count discard. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else, business managers report.
Good evening. Seeking approval of the warrants for April 29th, 2025.
6/8.
It's small on the back, it's a type one, so.
Oh.
Save it, please. Do you have the backup here?
I looked at it.
Did you find it? Yeah. Is it on the backup?
The last page of the meeting minutes.
I already put it away because I thought we were done. Sorry. Forgot it.
Make a motion to approve the warrant.
Second. Yep. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Kim? Carl?
Yeah.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jim? Arthur, yes. Vote to accept. Is there any grants and gifts? Nope. And no budget transfers?
No, just time.
Okay. Chairman's report. Well, it was a beautiful day outside for the girls' softball game. I got to enjoy most of it. Didn't have a very good outcome, but still, it was nice to see everybody playing. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so I added at the last moment, just seeing that we just got back from vacation, some documents that I would like the school committee to consider. And we did some work on the budget, so you're going to see a couple of documents here, and one is updated, we did an update to the budget. Do you see the, do you see where we're talking about it? Bonnie has blue on it. Jim, I'm just making sure.
So this did not get emailed to us, right?
We just, we just got it, hot off the press.
Oh, okay.
So I, this is what I'd like to discuss with the school committee, seeing that the town meetings are coming up. So, based on the most recent information from the state on changes in revenue and expenditures, I just want to make sure Jim has his.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's really important that we all have.
Yes.
So, Michelle, where is it?
Mine was right on top.
What about the people? Okay. So people on Zoom, you should have the email of the documents. So we took the information from the cherry sheet, which is the latest update with revenues from or expenditures, changes in expenditures. So on the first page, it gives us a look at where we are based on the recent outcomes from the House Ways and Means. For instance, the second line down where it says Chapter 70, the per pupil expenditure for the House Ways and Means almost doubled. It went to $150 per pupil, which makes a change, an increase in revenue. So there were several adjustments like that. Transportation, I think I talked about this a little bit before vacation, went from 95% to 100%. We talked about the amount of the $20,000 that we had in a credit for E and D that we were over, so we've looked into the excess and deficiency fund requirements, and it says that you can either give it back in FY '25 or FY '26. So we had that. And then we had the, we only had one bid for our transportation contract, and as we costed that out, we had some changes to what we had budgeted based on the outcome of the transportation contract. With all of those factors put into the budget, excuse me, there was another one, school choice tuition expense, that went up $3,500 as part of the cherry sheet, which is school choice out. So all those changes actually brought the budget down by $64,000, from a 4.51% budget to a 4.19% budget. And our operating budget would also be down. So with that, with those changes, I just wanted to also calculate what the change in assessment would be, so in the next page, you can see what the total, so the assessments changed from 2.12% down to 1.59%, which is about a $90,000 decrease in the assessments of the communities.
So what was that, 2.2 down to 1.9?
I think it's 1.59. And so I tried to show the difference here, and what would be the proposed reduction in assessments. Now, I've done this one other time in my 18-year career, where right before town meeting, there was enough of a significant difference in the change in assessments that I felt it was important that we consider as a school committee, having us prepare this for each member of the school committee, and on town meeting floor, the school committee member makes an amendment to the budget warrant down, so that the towns can have a reduced assessment on town meeting floor. So I'm bringing this to you as an option, because I think it's important that we say, if we've said that we're always looking to be as effective and efficient with our resources, that when we can, we reduce the assessments to the communities. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and see what your thoughts were, if people are willing to do that if we make, if we do the preparation, because our first town meeting is Saturday morning. I will say also, the other piece around that is, we were going to have to make a motion on Saturday morning because Monterey had used the preliminary budget hearing number, so they were already lower the first time, so we would be making a motion, someone would be making a motion on town meeting floor for Monterey, because they were already lower than what is in their warrant book, but for the rest of the communities, we would want to be thinking about whether or not we want to do that.
Nancy, has her hand up.
Nancy?
Yeah, I'm like, I, Miguel, I don't know if Miguel's really good, I'm certainly ready to, I have the preparation for it, so, yeah.
We would write it out for everybody, you know, for each town. We'd have the budget document, we would say what the, you know, we'd make sure that your warrant article is correct with the updated numbers.
Yeah.
I think it'll also be helpful, I mean, I think that people, you know, just.
I don't know any town that doesn't like to save money. Right? I, you know, I'm sure that they, and because I'm afraid it would end up in E and D at a higher amount next year, right? I mean, we don't want to just leave it as is.
Well, we don't know what's going to hap, remember, this is only still halfway through the process.
Right, well, that's my only concern, you know, it's like.
Which is why I'm not recommending more than that, you know, we've taken down, we had a very low E and D amount, and you can see, the reason we've talked about this and some people say, well, why aren't you using school choice? You can see that school choice moves all the time, which is why we don't rely on that as a funding source, but if we can reduce our excess and deficiency based on a reduction of expenditures or an increase in revenues that we are sure about, we should do that ahead of time, I think. We're only doing what we recommend. It's not huge, but $100,000, you know, $90,000 is worth it, I believe, which is the only reason I'm bringing it forward to the communities, and I think it's of consideration. So I thought we might as well see if the group is up for it, and I'm happy to go ahead and prepare this for the school committee members ahead of the town meetings.
I move that we accept Beth's offer to give this information to the town meeting about the budget. Assessment and total budget, information to present.
I second the motion.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I am curious at a cursory look. We know that the assessment's going down 89,000, and you took E and D down 100, right?
Because of the other increases.
Other changes.
And they, you know, so if we don't have to contribute as much.
Right, it'll save it for another year.
Right, because we're really down, we're a little below 300,000 right now, and all that's left, so we really want to keep it where it is. We have no idea what's going to happen.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, okay. I think that's smart.
But it does make a difference overall. I think it changed, you know, I think Sheffield's assessment, if you look closely, is, has changed overall. I think instead of .48, it's .04, so, you know, that, it does make a difference.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I see. Here's the percentages, okay.
Yeah, and it's broken out by every single category, so.
Arthur, Carl's hands up.
Oh, Carl?
Well, you know, this is not related to the superintendent's report, but it is related to, it's a little bit, Mike, I have a comment to make or a response, and I think it should be responded to, but I yield to author's judgment that I shouldn't do it during your presentation, Beth, because it has nothing to do, well, it has to do with everything, but it has nothing to do specifically with, but, uh, let's just think.
Does it have to do with this? Carl, can we wait till later?
Yes.
Okay. I will call back on you.
Okay. Fine, that's good.
So I think we just have to answer this question, right?
Yep. So Nancy?
Yeah, I've got one more question, which has to do with the backup for Miguel and myself, in case, in case you guys can't make it tomorrow.
Right.
But you might be apprised of this, so that you can answer some of the questions. But who would be apprised of this, so that he can answer some of the questions?
Uh, no, well, somebody from administration will make it, either Paul, somebody will make it.
Okay, great, that, that's.
Doesn't it have to be a member of the town?
It does, it does have to be a member of the town. But I'm saying we'll make it if you have a backup question.
So that you have the information.
Yes, but you will have it in writing. You just have to read, you'll just have to read it from your motion.
I'll be accepting the motion.
Yes.
Does anybody have any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, Tim?
Yes.
Carl?
Can you tell me what we're voting on?
We're voting on the amendment to lower the assessments to the town at the town meeting.
Oh, yeah, the answer is yes, I approve.
Nancy?
Yes.
Miguel?
Bonnie's up.
Oh, Bonnie's up.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. So.
Oh, Arthur?
Yes, Carl, go ahead.
Who made the motion to do that?
Jim DePisa.
And, and, okay, I didn't hear the motion, that's why I asked, okay. Thank you.
I don't know if he wants to ask the question.
Carl?
Let him ask his question.
Yes?
Carl, you want, you have a comment, or?
Yeah, well, I, I'm particular with respect to Ms. Cayman's comment on minutes. Without going into the minutia of the open meeting law, it's kind of weird.
We can't, Carl, we can't answer that.
Oh, we can't?
Nope, it was during public comment.
And then there's, and school committee members are not allowed to comment on comments?
Nope.
It could be a future agenda item.
Yep.
We can make it a future agenda item. It won't happen tonight, but.
Okay, Carl?
Man, I, I accept your ruling on that because I don't, I don't, I never, I don't know where that comes from, but since I don't know, I accept your ruling on it, yes.
Thank you.
Also, so the only other thing I think is important to share is there was some opportunity for some advocacy again. I took an opportunity to, as we talked about before the April break, the state really took down rural aid, and there's an opportunity. I wrote a letter on behalf of my office today about the need for them to fully fund rural aid as opposed to cutting it. That was one of the factors also, I should have said that, that we had to take down the rural aid by about half. We lost that funding, so that contributed to some of the changes and the offsets in the, in the budget. So, there's an opportunity to do that. And once I get back to my office after this meeting, my newsletter will go out, and the advocacy links are in there. You can, you can send a letter. But also, I think is really something to focus on is the interim commissioner, Mr. Tutwiler, Dr. Tutwiler, has a proposal. I think it went in front of the Board of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Today's quite thick, revising regional school regulations, proposed amendments to regional school regulations. And there's quite a few, quite a few language changes. And I think it's something that we really should sit down as a committee and take a look at what they're proposing.
Is this something that would go to policy? That will impact the policies that we're working on now? Or when you say, or regional agreement? When you say rules and regulations, I'm like.
We're all about regional school districts. So, it could be your regional agreement, it can be your funding formulas, it can be how you use E and D, it can be, it's quite extensive. And I was reading through it on my way back, and there were some things I'm very concerned about, like voting, everything. It's just like they've absolutely gone and taken red lines to regional school district regulations. So, I really think this is something that our committee should take some time to look over. I'll try to forward it to you after the meeting. But it's very interesting, and I think it went for first comment and vote to the Board of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education today. So, it kind of stuck on the radar. I'm not quite sure when all this happened and why he's bringing it forward at this moment. Yeah, hi Bonnie.
Hi. I sent to everyone in the school committee from the regional subcommittee of MASC, the Rural Schools, a, I think, wonderful letter, which you could just tweak slightly and send out to elected officials. So, the big pressure now has to be on the Senate.
Yeah.
And that's what everybody without the Rural MASC Subcommittee is pushing. May is attack, attack the Senate, to put it mildly. And I know Nancy took a, New Marlboro.
I also sent it out, I sent it out, I sent access to the letter. I was in town, so I think you can get to that. Yeah, I was sent to all, it's lots of people, I sent it to the towns, to Marlboro, to different out to districts. I was sending it to people here, as well. So, Beth, did you get a copy of that?
I think that's the one I, I was using.
You did, I expected that.
Great, great, yes, it's excellent, it's easy to use, and it's so far, there's been a lot of people using it across, at least across the world. There's absolutely just four of them out. There's a lot of love for it, so, okay.
That is different than what I'm talking about now, though. So, this is, this is a very, this is a different thing that I think you, that whole group will also be interested in looking at as well as the Mars Board of Directors. So, I will, I will share this with the whole committee, but, you know, we might want to take a small group of us in one of these committees, subcommittees, and really dig into what they're saying for these regulations and maybe give some feedback because I'm not sure we're going to agree with some of these proposals.
That's why I was wondering where the impact, which subcommittee or.
I just started, you could see it's quite dense, and I haven't had a chance. But again, he presented it today, right after vacation, like I was bringing it, I was reading it. So, I just feel like people should, we should, we should not let this go by without taking a look at it. So, I wanted to mention that.
Be prepared.
Okay. Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development.
All right, so tonight I have a short presentation for you about the Student Opportunities Act, which ironically, we get no money for, but we're required to do. And so, last year, we had to make a plan and submit it for three years. And this year, we had to do a review of that plan. So, you don't have to vote on this this year. I'm just giving you the update on our review process. So, last year, we developed our plan to include early college, innovative career pathways, studio experience, early childhood, and high-quality instructional materials. So, if you want to flip, Chris. So, when they asked you to do the review, kind of the Cliff Notes version was, look at the areas that you focused on in your three-year plan and see what was a problem and what was a strength. So, a challenge for early colleges, you know, was that Bard College at Simon's Rock has decided to close their campus in Great Barrington. So, they have ended their Massachusetts cap, campus presence, which means we can't continue to be their partner. But on the next slide, our wins or things to celebrate is that they have made a commitment to us to continue to honor awarding the transferable college credits for all our students' courses in the interim until we have a new partner. And we this year had five additional high school teachers go through the training process with Bard College to get early college certified, which will also help us in the transition, making sure that we still can continue to provide those college courses to our students. And every year, we have more and more students completing and acquiring more transferable college credits. So, that is another win.
So. Mrs. Stone, before we move on, I just want to make a slight alter to what she said. We can still partner with Bard College, and we will partner with Bard College. Our designation has to be transferred to a Massachusetts school. So, they will still be a partner of ours, they won't be our designation, the partner.
Okay, so that wasn't clear, sorry.
So, I just want to be clear on that. You are absolutely correct with their ability to still award our credits. But I just don't want to give the impression that they won't be in partnership with us even though they aren't in the state.
Yep. They just can't be our designated.
Correct.
Sorry, I was not clear on that. Thank you for clarifying.
I just want to make sure.
Okay, so innovation, career pathways. Chris could actually speak probably far better to this than I could. But we continue to grow and expand that. And most recently, with our clean energy innovation career pathway, which we have received feedback on, but we're still waiting for the formal award. That's correct, right, Chris?
Yes, that's correct.
So, if you have any questions about that, he's your man, not me. Studio experience, so first semester, we piloted studio experience with our seniors in high school. It was a full semester course, very successful. All the feedback from students and surveys and whatnot was that it really helped them grow their agency perseverance and problem-solving skills. So, then to expand it, you can have the next one. Second semester, we added another semester-long high school studio that's with our ninth-grade students. And then we have five other, what we kind of call mini-studios. So, these are traditional classrooms where the teachers have gone through the training and the pedagogy for a studio experience. And they're trying like a unit within their structure in this pedagogy to see how it compares to the more traditional way of teaching, which is really fascinating because with the new studios that we start, we don't have anything to compare it to. But with some of these courses, these teachers have taught the unit in a very traditional manner, and now they're teaching the same unit with this new pedagogy. So, they can really compare the two pedagogies for teaching standards. So, that is where we have expanded there. Early childhood, we continue to adapt and improve our curriculum by expanding our purposeful play through integrated standards, which focus on social, emotional learning, and then math, and reading, and social studies, and science, and all. It's very nice the way it's all embedded. And by the way, these pictures are actually of our students. They're not generic clip art. So, this is, I believe, our pre-K class in New Marlboro Central. And then high-quality instructional materials. This is our two photographs from a first-grade classroom where they are working on their structured literacy lessons, which has been a big focus for our K to 2 teachers this year. And we have seen great success in our data on this as well. That's that.
I got one.
Sure.
So, how does it work when you're teaching the same unit in the traditional method and then the new pedagogy? Which comes first?
Oh, you don't teach it to the same kids. It's last year you would have taught it traditionally.
Oh, oh, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, no, 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 no. You're not going to torture the kids with getting the same, no, no, no.
Twice, like, how does that work?
No, you're not, so it's comparing previous.
Oh, got it.
Right.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nancy?
Of course. I, I, this is following up on Julie's, listening, that as being an educator, I think that was so much fun to work with the change, education, and also to think that was so much fun to work with the change pedagogy and also to, um, the, um, for the teachers, teachers, and the students, if the studio experience, um, given our agency to the kids, and possibly to our.
I think we're all done, or... Oh, no, maybe Bonnie has her hand up. Bonnie, you have a question?
Go ahead, Bonnie.
No.
Oh, no, okay.
No, I have a question.
Okay, thank you. How's that?
Awesome, yeah.
Thank you. Next, Director of Student Services.
Hi, good evening. I sat down to write my report today and then realized it's been two and a half school days since my last report.
Didn't make sense, did it?
So I didn't feel like all the things I wanted to share. But I did already. But I did want to mention, once again, we have a special Olympics next Wednesday up at Monument Mountain, 9:00 AM. And that's May 7. And I looked ahead today, and it looks like it's going to be 68 degrees and sunny. So I'm going to hope for that. It's a perfect day. And please know that you're invited. And we have a number of students who are participating as athletes, and it's always a wonderful event. So just wanted to put that out there to you again. And that's all I have.
How long does that usually go till?
It's usually about three hours. It's right about nine to noon.
Noon?
Do you have students from Mount Everett helping?
Yes, there are students from Mount Everett that are helping, volunteering, yes.
Yeah, thank you. I do, I do like to acknowledge that.
Absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that.
Does Bonnie have a question?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
New business, Southern Berkshire Community Health Coalition Prevention Needs Assessment Presentation.
You're up. You were patient.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. Today, we're going to be doing a presentation on the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. It was taken this year. We came last year to present, oh, yeah.
Can you pull the microphone towards you?
Thank you.
That is close as it goes.
Can you hear it?
Can you hear me? I mean, I can speak louder if you'd like.
Yes, speak a little louder.
Okay, sorry.
You can hear better out there, too.
We will protect.
Yeah, it's not just us, it's on Zoom.
Yeah, let's check.
Hold on.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Chris.
And Chris will just tell you, I guess. Maybe it'll be out.
Okay. So today, we're going to be giving a presentation on the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey from 2025. We came last year and did the statistics from 2023. So we're excited to give a more updated report. My name's Leslie Baptista Cruz. I'm with Roaster Youth Project. And I'm a current senior at Mount Everett. I'll be graduating in June. And I am the co-chair from Mount Everett. And I've been with the coalition for a couple of years now.
My name is Mabel Cooney. I'm currently attending Monument Mountain. And I'm the co-chair alongside Leslie.
Hey, I'm Laura Rodriguez. I'm the director of the health coalition. Longtime friend of the school committee.
Okay, I know Michelle shared with you guys the presentation packets. So we're just going to start off with the presentation.
So first, we're going to start explaining what is the South County Community Health Coalition. It's many organizations and people combined to improve the holistic health of South County youth and families by promoting community partnership and resources.
All right. What is the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey? It's also known as the PNA. So if you see the PNA anywhere throughout the presentation, that is what it means. It's basically a big community report card. It's a digital survey that we give to eighth, 10th, and 12th graders every two years. So there is a cohort that is missed because of the two-year gap. And then it focuses on main domains of community, family, school, individual, and peer that tie with risk and protective factors, as well as substance use. And we have data going back since 2006. These are some main issues. A lot of these are actually similar to last year's presentation. Again, normalize and relax attitudes towards alcohol and drug use by families and community. We are a very big marijuana and cannabis-heavy community. There is lots of dispensaries around. So that causes a lot of relaxed attitudes towards that, as well as a torn-based economy, which increases the use of alcohol and drug use. And then students notice those laws and norms that favor the substances, as well as drinking with parental permission. This can include drinking within their own home with their parents' permission, or going to a friend's house and having that friend's parental permission drinking. As well as isolation, and low perception of harm increases youth substance use. So some students may not know what they're really getting into, what the damages are, the harms of using substances at like such a young age. And mental health in general, such as depressive symptoms. These are some high-risk factors we want to lower. Some of them have seen improvements, but they're still relatively high. So the first one is laws and norms that favor drug use. This was within the community domain. As you can see, it keeps increasing. There was a 1% decrease from 2023 to 2025, but it is still well above 50%, and well above the nationwide statistic at 37%. Family conflict, this was within the family domain. They were all, you can see that it's slightly decreasing, which is really, really good. We hope that it keeps decreasing. And it looks like it's on a pretty good track. And as well, it's under the nationwide statistic at 39.3%, which is really good. Low commitment to school, this was within the school domain. All grades, it was above 50%. And there was a slight dip in 2023 at 52%, but then it raised to 59%, almost 60% for 2025. So really looking at those numbers. And it's right matched there with the nationwide statistic. Then as well, depressive symptoms, this was in the peer and individual domain. All grades, again, almost above 50%. But you can see there's a really, really nice decrease within the years since 2021. Even from 2023 to 2025, that's almost a 10% decrease. And we are under the nationwide statistic. So that is very good.
So now we're going to move on to high protective factors. And this is where we've seen some good improvement. So an opportunity for pro-social involvement in the family domain, we have a pretty good increase from 2023, which is now at 72%. And this is above our nationwide as well, which is at 67%. Our interaction with pro-social peers in the peer and individual domain is at 37% this year, and is an increase from 2023 and 2021. We are also above the nationwide with that one as well. And then in family attachment with all grades, we have 67% in 2025. And we are also above the nationwide there as well. So on this side, we're comparing statistics of, in the past 30 days, of substances such as vaping, alcohol, and marijuana. So in the 12th grade, we have alcohol at 62.8%, marijuana at 18%, and vaping at 25%. These are, the vaping and marijuana numbers are low, and they are good numbers. The alcohol is the more endearing one. In 10th grade, we have alcohol at 31%, marijuana at 21, and vaping at 27. And then in 8th grade, we have alcohol at 12, marijuana and vaping at also around 12%. So this is good considering that around 82% are not partaking in those substances.
Next, we focus on the Black and Latinx communities, specifically on mental health. This was something that we noticed in the past survey. The mental health statistics were actually higher for those students. It has decreased slightly. But here's actually a question directly from the survey. It's during the past 12 months, did you make a plan about how you would attempt suicide? The light blue is yes, students who responded yes. And then the dark blue is students who responded no. For 8th grade, 10% responded yes, which is concerning. But it's also important to notice that 90% of students reported no. And then for 10th grade, 100% of students responded no, which is amazing. That's really nice to hear. And then for 12th grade, 6% responded yes, but there's still a huge amount of students that said no. Although these statistics are lower than the substance use, they could be a factor for future substance use.
So now we're going to look at the concerns of this year. So alcohol consumption in 12th grade is quite high. It is currently at 53%, and it keeps increasing each year compared, and that's in comparison to the nationwide, which is at 22%. E-cigarette consumption in 8th and 10th grade are pretty low right now, with 8% and 17%. But they are increasing each year. But the 12th grade does decrease. And then marijuana consumption from 10th grade is at 20%, which is double the nationwide at 10%. In general, most of our substance use statistics are higher than both the countywide and nationwide average. And then 59% of all students reported low commitment to school. 53% of all students reported laws and norms that favor drug use. 43% of all students got marijuana from someone under the age of 21. And 25% of all students got alcohol from their home with parent permission.
Now we're moving on to the Southern Berkshire Regional School District, like, slide. So this is only statistics from SBRSD. So if we look at the risk and protective factors, I mainly looked at the family and school domains. Those, to me, stood out the most. So for family attachment, this is very good. 70% of students said that they had attachment to their family. Opportunities for pro-social involvement, so that's like any activities that they may do at home or outside, things like that. That was also really well, at 72%. Sibling drug use is at 42%. It's a little under 50%, but it's still very high for the small community that we have. And then parent attitudes favor drug use is at 39%. Again, because we're a small community, it's concerning. Then we go on to the school domain. So opportunity for pro-social involvement is at 75%. So this is any extracurricular, sports, plays, clubs, anything you do like that. I will say myself, I've done a lot in school. So I thank Mount Everett for that. They did a very good job for giving me those opportunities. Rewards for pro-social involvement is at 69%. That's also really, really good. We think a couple of ways that could increase is by just rewarding any student in general. Doesn't have to be academic. They don't have to be top of their class. Just students in general, even for doing small, good things. And I know we did like the attendance awards and with the Dunkin' Donuts cards. And I think those have been effective. So that's really good. Academic failure is at 50%. That is high. It's half the student body reporting that for 2025. And low commitment to school is also very high at 62%. Now, if we move on to the substance use rates, this was reported for use 30 days prior to taking the survey. So we focused on nicotine, tobacco, alcohol, marijuana. For 12th grade, 56% of students were not consuming alcohol. So that is more than half. In 12th grade as well, 87% of students were not consuming marijuana. That is way above 50%. 10th grade, 80% of students were not using e-cigarettes, as well, very high, very good. And then 8th grade, 88% of students were not consuming alcohol, which is also really, really nice to hear. And all grades, 50% were not consuming energy drinks. Energy drinks were mostly popular within 8th grade, the younger ages. And a lot of them also said that it's because more of the flavor than the actual caffeine.
So I wanted to talk a little bit about our place, the coalition's place in programming and response to some of the things that you've heard. Again, all these numbers are really looking good. I think by and large, our big concerns are with what's happening in the home and what's happening within our community. So I just want to really just like give a big shout out to the schools. Young people generally feel very safe in the school, and it's a protective environment. So we're super excited about that. Within, for young people, our current strategy, our current programming is our Peer Health Education Initiative. We actually just had a really lovely conversation with Julie a couple of weeks back. This was the year that we sort of piloted that program. We brought in our own curriculum coordinator for that, who designed the curriculum in conjunction with young people in this building and then also at Monument. Next year, I believe it's already on the program of studies. So it'll be something that's readily available to students and something that we can offer widely. And I believe it fits into the studio experience. Super exciting. So that's dialed in, ready to go. We also have our Restorative Prevention Fellowship. That is an opportunity. It's a paid fellowship program. It has to be tied to substance use prevention in some way, and an existing program at Railroad Street. Could be our youth operational board, could be mentorship, could be apprenticeship. There's a lot of ways to do that. And it's really for students who are really independently driven, have a project in their mind, where they want to resource our community in some way. And we pay them $2,000 to do that and provide essentially coaching support along their journey. We do course corrections as needed. So that's up and running in both high schools. That is available to ninth through 12th graders. Tell a friend. We're still recruiting for that and accepting applications through mid-May. Very exciting. And we're setting that up for next year so that students have that incorporated into their plan for next year. And then on the parent end, we have a variety of forums that we provide throughout the year. We try to do, we offer things that are probably seen as a little bit more formal. They're like a lot of heavy information, kind of like this, really unpacking cannabis use, alcohol use. And so, you know, that's sort of for parents just, and community members, really wanting more information about that, and really wanting to hear about the resources we provide. And then we're kind of leaning into more informal events. Most recently, we hosted a screening at the Triplex Theater, just a screening of a movie, recall Recovery City, that was, you know, an opportunity to kind of connect as a community, look at a film that was made relatively locally. It was made in Worcester over the course of several years. And that was, the aim of that was to connect people, share a little bit with the community about the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey, and really just keep de-stigmatizing what it really, what substance use is, and just addiction in general. So that was an example of that. And then we, of course, have our Kitchen Table Talks program. That is an opportunity for a facilitator to come to your home, get groups of parents together to really resource each other, kind of sharing their struggles and successes, and skill build around communicating with the young people in their lives. Could be their children, could be people, young people that are in your orbit at work, or your kids' friends. Really lean into the skill of communicating with young people in your life about substance use and about substance use prevention, and even learning how to sort of confront how you feel about your own behavior as a teenager and how you're reconciling that. So we're really trying to resource parents in that way and accommodate them. We can come to your house. We can set up something where we meet, and really anywhere. And we're hoping that in time, that really creates a ripple effect in our community of really just having really open, honest conversations about that, where we kind of just can get past that thing of, you know, not knowing what to say, not knowing how to start the conversation, and just get beyond that so that we're really just radically communicating with the young people in our lives, and letting them know that they're supported. Great. So, how can the school committee help? Some of you who saw this presentation last year will notice that some of these are really the same. I thought it was an opportunity to kind of like check in to where we're at with all these things. Encourage school staff recognition of individual students' growth. I think this district is doing an amazing job of really recognizing, meeting students where they're at, and recognizing, you know, all aspects of growth, big and small. You know, Leslie really attested to that. Approach discipline and consequence with curiosity and care. I added that one this year because we heard a lot from students within really frank peer-to-peer conversations about substance use, that when somebody gets in trouble in the building or near the building, and it's related to substances, that first encounter with discipline and consequences, that is like a critical moment for young people. So I just want people to think about a way to be caring in that situation, because if that first experience is riddled with shame, it's really hard to ask for help and the resources you need. So that was just something that really resonated with me from the discussions we've had with young people so far. And I don't know what that looks like in the school environment, to be totally honest. But it's just something I'm thinking about and wanted to share with all of you. Continue to expand access to off-campus pro-social programs like RSYP through school transportation. That, you know, has expanded this year, just even with the activity bus. And I'm super appreciative of that. And I think we've seen the difference at the drop-in center and in our programs, just acknowledging that Sheffield's a little bit, you know, further out from Great Barrington than the campus, the BHRSD campus. So that's super helpful. And I'd love to continue to be creative with that. You know, continue your rigorous accountability in the district with anti-racism, anti-bias, and DEI work. Just really want people to, I know the school committee has had a practice of looking at your action plan. So I would just encourage you to continue to do that and really be transparent about it. Incorporate PNA data into district visioning work and decision-making. And I'm guessing that that's some of the data that informs where people go with planning. Increase opportunities and increase barriers for sixth and eighth graders to participate in meetings. Mr. Carpenter can attest to the fact that that's successful. We've really had a lot more middle schoolers at our meetings. You know, we don't know what the motivation is to be in the meeting in the middle of the school day. We know that that's exciting to switch up your schedule. But it's so valuable to have young people, particularly middle schoolers, which is where we look at for prevention in those meetings. So just so appreciative of the support we've had in the school with that. Partner with us on parent resource initiatives. I really think about, especially Kitchen Table Talks, as like almost a referral process. So I'm really strategizing, like working with adjustment counselors, other people who have direct contacts, contact with families. When you're really seeing a family in crisis, whether it's the student or the family orbit dealing with these heavy substance use issues, or maybe not so heavy, maybe they're just on that track, we would love to be pulled into some of that work to help to resource those families. So happy to talk about that more at another point. And then continue integrating peer health education and PNA analysis into curriculum. We've got them to work, so that's great. And then last but not least, we have an open-door policy in our meetings. We would love to see the school committee there, admin there. Our next meeting is actually on Thursday in the Eagles Loft. So we'd love to see you there. We'll be doing a little bit more PNA work, but really peer-to-peer work. So there'll be breakout discussions amongst students. And that's where we really learn a lot about how young people see their environment. And frankly, it backs up a lot of the data that we're seeing. So that's basically it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, girls. You did a great job.
Thank you.
If you have any questions or...
I have a question. I'm wondering about the low commitment to school. And what kind of questions are asked that you ascertain that number?
I know. I wanted to, I don't have that right there. It's like, it's in the longer report. Because the language is tricky.
Yeah, that's why I kind of wondered, like, what kind of questions do you get a kid to answer one way or the other, feeds into that statistic?
It's a little confusing. And I'm like, want to be better versed about that. But like, I'm very happy to follow up with you about that, because, you know, the way the language translates, it is important to look at the questions, for sure. So it's really early on in there. But I'm going to circle back to on that one.
Okay.
one.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Kind of get in touch with you about getting together with the clinical team?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll reach out to you and get that scheduled.
Yeah.
They meet weekly, so.
Yeah. I, I do want to add one last thing, which is, um, if there is an opportunity to do a similar, maybe, maybe slightly skewed presentation to, uh, school staff, like, in the professional development, like, just prior to school time without students around, I would love that opportunity. So, just going to put that out there.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you, Julie.
Carl?
Uh, uh, what am I up for?
Nothing. I just, I saw you had a question.
No, 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 I'm just, uh, uh, I'm just shifting screens, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Nancy?
Of course, I just want to make Laura, who came back, um, just to see the changes over the last year or if we could, just sort of have a handle, um, a handle on crazy or what's going on is, is helpful.
Yeah.
And also the name, all of the guys took a number that goes into putting this together and it's, it's, it's honest. Like, I've seen it before, it's honest.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. There's so many areas of improvement and we'll be back next year, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, review and approval of academic calendar for FY '26.
Okay. In your packets on, uh, 11B is, uh, the draft academic calendar. Uh, at this point, um, we have had some, uh, suggestion from faculty and staff and SBREA. We always give them a chance to look at it. Um, we did the development of it, that's part of the school committee's charge and administration, but we like to give, um, opportunity. So, uh, we made, um, several changes as a result of their feedback. Um, we, uh, there was a half-day on May 20th that, um, we just, we did check the MCAS window and we did move it to May 14th instead of May 20th. Um, there was an ask to change the, um, Wednesday, February 11th half-day to another day, so it didn't interfere with the SKE program. We made that change. Um, we also moved the half-day the week after April vacation. Uh, we actually made some, you know, we, we kind of stepped back and looked at, there are some proposals, we're still in, um, contract negotiations and some of the proposals were to eliminate some of the professional development half-days. We believe very strongly in the importance of strong, high-quality professional development, so, um, we didn't make all the changes. We, uh, but we did, uh, remove the professional development, uh, half-day in February, um, and, but we also did move, uh, we had two full days of professional development. We have one in January and we moved the second one to April 6th as a full-day PD. Um, we did not stay with a November 4th full day, um, which is on Election Day. Um, we, we moved that to April 6th. So, we have no PD in November. We did that in months where we have a lot of time off already, you know, keeping the, um, the, uh, keeping that more consistent, so we're not making the month stop.
February is a short month.
November is a short month.
So, we didn't do PD then.
However, um, there was some discussion about, um, current contractual language around, um, having a half-day in November in response to conferences in the fall. We did it this year and we kept it the same this year. We made it so that the half-day relating to conferences is earlier. It's in October because we feel it's more meaningful for students and families to be earlier in the semester and also it gave families a long weekend and we felt like that made more sense, um, to keep it. So, we kept it in October to extend kind of a holiday weekend experience for families instead of breaking something up. So, um, with that, we are still scheduled to have the last day of school be, uh, June 16th and this is the proposal for now. Again, it could change, um, based on however we land for, um, contract negotiations, but this is what we're proposing. And we like to get it out to families. This is actually a little later than, than we normally like to do it, so.
So, high school conferences, that means like the parent and teacher conferences? That's the reference? Okay. Just, I wanted to make sure I had that language.
Yep.
The only thing I look at, the last day of school, if you have more than two schools, two snow days, and then you have Juneteenth on Friday, that means the last day could get pushed forward, like if you had the third snow day?
Good.
I mean, that is a reality of what would happen.
And it's right where we are this year.
Okay.
I mean, we were, we're, we're June 17th or so.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's some trade-offs and, and this particular year, um, the way it falls, we just felt strongly that, um, this is the year that you do the two-week break at Christmas. It just falls the right way and so, we didn't break it up. Um, that would have given us a few extra days, but...
Yeah.
The quality of what you're going to get during that time, families are going to go. And so, it doesn't make sense to old school. Um, but I, I think this is kind of the best compromise that we can make.
Yeah.
And, I mean, not going, I don't like to say it because the weather is the weather, you know?
Yeah.
And it's not predictable, but, um, I, so far, what did I call it, one maybe this year, two?
I was just going to say, how many snow days this year?
Two, maybe?
One or two, right? One was late. I remember one being really late, which is normal.
It was ice, more ice.
Yeah.
So, you know, it wasn't really, it hasn't been extensive, but there has been times. It's been in, uh, March day and April, it's been late, so.
Yeah. Okay. So, do you need a motion?
We do.
To do this?
We do need to.
Um, I make a motion that we approve the 2025, 26, um, academic calendar presented as a draft.
I second that motion. Anybody have any comments? Seeing none. Kim?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bonnie? Hi, okay. Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Arthur, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Families will be happy to have an idea.
Okay.
Start their planning.
Reviews?
Oh, we just did that. She did it in her report.
Okay. All right. Review and approve school committee goals.
Yep. I make a motion that we approve the SBRSD School Committee Goals and Objectives as presented.
I'll second that.
Anybody have any comment?
I second.
May I, may I ask a question?
Yep.
Uh, is, did we, did you mention, um, I'm just rethinking about what I heard, that this would be goals for maybe longer than this school year?
Oh.
We're thinking that it was kind of going to be maybe a two-year thing because seeing it's April.
Because it's so late. It took us so late with everything.
Do you want, you know, would it be, would it make sense to have this before this year and next year or something? Like, what do you think about that?
It makes sense to me. So, I, I would amend the motion for the, what year are we in? '24, '25 and '25, '26 school year. You agree?
I agree.
Kim?
It's already seconded.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Just voting.
Just voting. Anybody have any more comments? Seeing none. Jim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Back to Kim?
I second.
Okay. All right.
The one thing I could comment with the PNA presentation, there are several of these bullets where, you know, it, to gra, just keeping that presentation in mind that would fit nicely. Yeah.
Okay. I have lost my, here we go. Um, Finance Committee, I have nothing. Community Relations?
Uh, everybody got the newsletter? I think it came out pretty well. It was, um, they went into it, um, and the power of under buying, I missed that one earlier, um, I do have some to say, as am I, on the table for support, for, for, for a rule that's gross for the topic, uh, I believe 30% of, of the House was needs and complaints beginning in the bargaining season, you know? But, um, our legislators, um, across, across the state need to have talking points they need to have, if not our stories, and please know that their constituents are, are desperately sure of this. It'll be a huge difference if something will take all the tools to do, so I really hope we can get that out there. Um, and, um, when and or if you have just seen the actual template, or the template, please, if you're willing to do this, um, speaking for myself as someone who's been willing to drop the advocacy, you know, basically, send it to your neighbors, you know, send it to, um, who have kids, grandkids, uh, I think that this is something that affects this across the state. It certainly affects our district. So, yeah, following up on the great article that Miguel put together, now we get to have it. And also, great thing to the, um, the rural school, MASC, so everybody on rural schools is a new, it's a new, um, it's a subcommittee and I have to say, I enjoy working on it a lot, uh, because of the mutual support and also having the opportunity to know how much rural and regional schools are sharing the same problems. So, um, yeah, I'll, I'll put those out to just rural, which is a plus as well as rural and that. That's all I have to say in the newsletter, great.
Vote! Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Me again. Me again. Apologize. Um, would you, uh, would the school committee be interested in, um, sending a letter? I said one as a superintendent, but the school committee could also do an advocacy letter.
Great.
Yep.
You know, we, we could have, um, if, if the school committee is willing to authorize using that letter, have Art sign it and get it off, I think that would be an important step for us.
You have a comment?
Did Bonnie send you the actual letter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Nancy and I both okayed the letter going out with our names, but as individuals, not to have a school committee. So, what Beth is asking for, I believe, is much more powerful if we take a motion, um, to support it as a school committee.
Great.
I'll entertain that motion.
Should one of those guys want to make that?
I will move that we take the letter formed by the Regional Subcommittee of MASC and make it a letter from the school committee.
I second it.
Any more discussion? Kim?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Art, yes.
I agree.
Nancy, yes.
Policy, Carl?
Yeah. Okay. I assume, uh, that members of the, uh, Policy Subcommittee have received, I think it was today, it might have been yesterday, but I think it was today, uh, two, uh, letters with attachments from Liz LaFonte of MASC with the section C and D policy manuals to review. Now, I have a question. I think my calendar is wrong. I have tomorrow, April 30th afternoon, late afternoon, as a meeting of the Policy Subcommittee. I'm wrong, uh, am I not?
No.
No, you're right.
You're right, Carl.
You're right, Carl.
And it's 5:30.
5:30.
Well, okay, then I'm right. Does someone know when that was posted?
Freaking killing me. Oh, like a week and a half ago?
A long time ago.
A long time ago. Yeah, a while ago.
I, I searched for a posting and couldn't find one. I went back.
It's in our school, yes.
It is?
Is it posted on the website? I don't know that, but.
I'll see you there. Okay, I went back over a month and didn't find it.
Yeah, I see that.
Do you have a date? Did someone, can someone reference a date?
We'll look for it.
Okay. And if you just send me an email, tell me why, because I, I really looked carefully and I, I guess it is, if it exists, I guess it didn't look all that carefully.
So, we got our packets from Liz or will they come from Michelle? Michelle?
No, the packet, the packet came from Liz.
But she'll probably make it copyright. But Liz sent them, but she should bring some for you guys.
Unless they came out. I didn't see them today, but.
They came, I, one, either one yesterday and one today, or they're, they're very recent.
I've got nothing from Liz. Does she have?
I think one of them, let's see, I think that's not, but they did go.
It was posted April 18th, Carl.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'm looking.
That did for me then. I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Personnel negotiations?
Yes, we're moving on. We have two meetings left within the next two and a half weeks and we've got to move ahead.
Thank you. Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee?
No, we have dates.
Thank you. Executive Minutes, Carl?
Yeah, I, I was surprised to learn, uh, from Michelle, uh, that there are very few executive session minutes that remain to be reviewed for approval or not approval. Uh, and, uh, quite a bit fewer than I thought. So, I will be asking, uh, next week, uh, I will suggest, uh, several dates for members of the executive minutes, uh, review, so, to have a meeting so that we can, uh, review those and hopefully be carried in a very short period of time.
Okay, Carl.
Julie, um, I just forwarded you C and D. She used the wrong Julie.
Oh. I was wondering why I got that.
Oh, you don't want. Oh, actually, it's very fun.
Yeah, I was like, why is Liz LaFonte sending me something? That makes sense.
Anyway, I fixed it.
Oh, thank you.
Next time, I'll know to forward it to you.
Oh, okay.
But you're more than willing to come to the...
Oh, you know what? I just thought, I don't think this is in my purview.
In my purview?
Yes.
It's not in your purview.
Future agenda items, that's to be determined, executive session?
Nope.
Nope. Number 16.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Jim?
Yes. Oh.
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.